7:33, we're here for the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the good soul, liberty, and justice for all. Clerk Zyprian, please call a roll.
Park, absent. Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Conquest?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Leader?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Graham, absent. Palmsky?
Here.
York?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent, we have a quorum. On with the meeting. Okay, a little bit of a special presentation tonight. We have Bill Shanklin here, and Bill, as many of you may know, is a member of our Economic Development Commission. Bill is also a member of our Library Board. And Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Bill's also on our Veterans Commission, yes? So, Bill does three things for the city of Elmhurst, but tonight I think I will recognize him as Sergeant Shanklin. He's here in full uniform, and I'm going to ask Sergeant Shanklin to take us through a recent experience he's had. Please, right there next to Mr. Dunn, if you would. No, come this way. There you go.
Well, I feel a little conspicuous, to say the least, but what you see me wearing was one of the requirements that I had to fulfill before I could make the jump, and that is to have, not an original, but it had to be an original reproduction of the uniform, right down to the type of helmet that I had to jump when I went in. Before I left, I had talked to a couple of people, and, you know, the city's been good to the veterans in our community, and especially our posts, and it is not uncommon for people doing what we were doing over there to take things with them that they want to give to the community, the family, or things they might want to keep for themselves. So, this is a tradition, and I did talk to some people, what do you think if I take the city of Elmhurst flag in, and a couple of other things? And they said, "No, do it, it would be well received here." So, this evening I would like to do two things. Number one, I would like to give to the Fire Chief, and is the Police Chief here, Ruth, or somebody? These patches went in with me, and I would like to give them to you in honor of that jump. I've worked a lot with both units. And now, if I may, I'd like to present the flag.
Mr. Shanklin, I'm going to come up there and get that flag from you, but why don't you back up a little bit for those in the audience? So far, you've just referred, now, I know what you've done, but back up about six months and tell us how this started and what you actually did.
The idea to make this jump started with a conversation that I had with another member of our Special Forces Association back in December. Ralph Peterson, retired Lieutenant Colonel, he lives in DeKalb. And when he first talked to me about it, he said, "You know, you're qualified to do this, why don't we think about doing it?" So, when he first mentioned it to me, I didn't think much about it. I'm a busy guy, I've got a lot of things going on. So, he kept talking to me, calling me, he said, "Hey, I'm going to send you some information. Came from an organization called DAX over Normandy. They actually supply all the aircraft, the original C-47s, that we were going to jump." Making a long story short there, the more I got into this, the more I realized this was a significant thing that I could do in my life, to make a jump celebrating the 75th anniversary of D-Day, honoring those men that on June 6th, about 12:35 a.m. in the morning, 13,100 shoot it up to go over to Normandy. Many of them didn't make it to Normandy, the airplanes returned back, malfunctions, whatever. Some got shot out of the sky. Many did land, some few landed on the drop zone. My drop zone was Keratin, the 101st Airborne was assigned to that drop zone. A lot of those guys got shot out of the sky. And you might say, "Well, why would you do this at this time in your life? You've got a lot of things going, and there's a certain inherent danger with doing this." There's a lot of things that we had to meet to get qualified to do this, a lot of hurdles. But we wanted to memorialize those men that did that. Many missed their drop zone, miles away. But the one thing we have to remember is they accomplished their mission. Disorganized, lack of leadership, but they got together, and they did their job, and they were successful in blocking reinforcements to the beach from the Germans. What caused that? The spirit. The spirit that still lasts today with paratroopers. My body has aged, but not my spirit. And those of you who know me know that spirit is still alive, and it'll be with me as long as I live. But we had to get a lot of things done, I had to get requalified. My last jump was in 1969. So, one of the requirements is you've got to jump 180 days prior to the event. So, I had to find an organization to get me trained up, get me past that jump. And I did, an organization called Round Canopy Parachute Team. For those of you who may not be familiar with this, this is not the ram shoots that you see in skydiving. This is the round shoot, very similar to what the men jumped in on D-Day. Harder hit, that's about, these shoots, you can't control them as well as these ram shoots. Anyway, Mr. Peterson, the guy that got me into this, on his certification jump, broke his leg. And ugly sight. He was heartbroken over it, but he'll recover, and maybe he'll make Market Garden later on this year, I don't know. But anyway, you had to get all my records squared away, had to prove that I am capable of doing this, get a doctor's release, show that I'm physically fit. I got a personal trainer back in January to strengthen my legs, because legs take a pretty good shock when you hit the ground with this type of parachute. And so, I did it. Got it all squared away, got certified, and next thing you know, I'm on an airplane to Slept in a tent for four nights on the jump day, June 5th. Got up four o'clock in the morning, busy day. One of the things I want to say about this group, very professional, all professional, retired, most of them retired, either Special Forces people, certainly 82nd, 101st. By the way, the 82nd, I'm wearing this in honor of Joe Vanek. I think a lot of you know Joe and his mom, Jan. He was a member of the 82nd, and he was killed over in Iraq. I didn't communicate this to her, I'll talk to her about it later, but it's because of him that I'm a life member of the 82nd Airborne Division. So, sum it up, it was a great experience, I'll remember it the rest of my life, made some new friends I'll probably have for the rest of my life. So, it's been a great experience. I knew it would be meaningful, but it's even more meaningful to me than I ever imagined. People ask me, "Well, Bill, how did it feel when you landed?" And I said, "Well, I got up, counted everything, I'm in one piece." I had two emotions, one elation and deflation. For something I've been planning now, intently for about six months, now what? I told my family, "It's not going to be jumping out of an airplane again, I'm finished with that, I'm going to hang up the parachute." So, didn't make it, stayed for the ceremony the next day, the 6th, and I'm very, very happy I went to that. And by the way, a highlight of my trip was meeting survivors, or these WWII vets that jumped into Keratin, St. Mary's Glee's. And they were there on the stage, if you watched the program. So, meeting these people, Tom Price, you probably saw it on TV, the guy that tandem jumped, 97-year-old WWII vet, and he's still doing it, he does it every year. Now, to talk about spirit, I'd like to have him on my team. Great man, just salt of the earth. I'll say one thing and I'll wrap it up. Some of the people I got to meet, have you heard the term horse soldier? 12 Strong movies, that strike a bell? That team jumped with us, in our group, on June 5th. They were the ODA 595 Special Forces Team that went in right after the towers went down, and were the first people to respond and represent America in Afghanistan. I got to meet the CIA agent that met them, and Mark, and Bob, and the whole team. What a privilege it was to be with these guys. And most people call me Mr. Shanklin, because I was at least 10 years older than most of these guys. Anyway, that's my story. Thanks for listening to me, and can I present the flag now?
Before I come down there, I want to ask you one more question, then I think maybe one or two members of council may have a question for you, if that's okay, or a statement of thanks. Briefly, could you tell council and the audience about your active military career?
My active military service? I served a total of six years, three years active duty, and then I got out for a couple of years and got a little letter from, a nice letter, from a Colonel that was rebuilding a 12 Special Forces Group here in the Chicagoland area, and he made me an offer I couldn't refuse. And so, I spent three more years in Special Forces, getting up, training up the reserve group, because McNamara wanted a large reserve force. Now, if you think about it, it worked, because guess who carrying a lot of the water today in our conflicts? It's the reserves, the National Guard. Somebody had vision back in those days to build up that reserve. I spent, I got out as a Sergeant E-7. I was offered a direct commission, but building a career, going to school, I had to make a decision, so I got out. I spent two and a half years overseas, 42 jumps, now I have 44. I'm trying to, I was trying to get to 47, because that was my number in jump school. But that's my life story, I guess, in the military.
Well, Mr. Shanklin, personally, I want to thank you for the, not only the three commissions you serve on in Elmhurst, and you do a fantastic job and are a leader in the community, but certainly you have my undying gratitude as a member of the Armed Services, and really thank you for your service. Any other comments from the dice? Hard to believe Alderman Leader has something he wants to say here.
I do, I do. I have to say something here, I really do. In the waning days of basic training, a spick-and-span officer, wearing silver wings over his heart, like you are, came by to ask us to volunteer for airborne training. After he left, our drill sergeant commentated, comment, commentated, riley, that only damn fools jump out of aeroplanes. Of course, he was wrong. Only the bravest jump out of aeroplanes. I never did it. But Bill did it 44, 46, 47 times while serving on active duty with the United States Army, where he attained the rank of Sergeant First Class. No small thing. E-8, I never made it past E-4. And I can assure you, from my service in the Army Medical Corps with the 11th Field Hospital in support of the 11th Airborne Division, that jumping out of aeroplanes or going up in helicopters can be very dangerous. I have many disturbing memories of injured troopers, even some dead ones. But when something is behind you, its outline generally softens. Maybe there really isn't any past, Bill. Maybe it's all back there waiting for us to find it again, as you did at Normandy. But ask Bill if you don't think jumping out of aeroplanes can be dangerous. Bill's 45th, 6th, 47th, jump came 50 years after his last jump in the Army. His next jump came on the 75th anniversary of D-Day, which to those who actually jumped in 1944 was like pushing open the door to a dark room never seen before, without knowing what lies before that door. Bill and the other brave men commemorated this extraordinary heroism by parachuting over the sacred grounds of Normandy. Now, Bill is not a young man anymore, but he nevertheless proudly and bravely jumped. He epitomizes the best of Elmhurst and the best of America. Once he was young and a soldier, he did his part in what had to be done to keep all of us and our children and grandchildren safe and secure. Bill is a forthright gentleman, he is a fort and a foundation for all of us. When duty calls to a man like Bill, he does not refuse. His life is part of the record of those men who do not merely talk about doing the right things, but whose lives exemplifying doing the right things. Sergeant Shanklin, the City Council thanks you, the Mayor thanks you, and I thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Norman. Anyone else?
Can I just tell one little joke?
Absolutely.
You reminded me of an airborne joke, and you might like this. Often, you get asked, "What's jump school like?" Jump school's pretty tough. Back in the day, it's a little different now, it's still tough, but not the way it was with us. It was brutal. The idea was to knock you out. They didn't want anybody but the best of the best, that they knew that were going to accomplish the mission. So, what's jump school like? Well, it's three weeks long. The first week is a lot of ground training, that's where they separate the men from the boys. The second week is tower training, where you're jumping out of towers. They separate the men from the fools. And the third week, the fools jump. Best I can do.
Alderman Mulliner.
Bill, I just want to say thank you for your service and for honoring Elmhurst by taking with you on the jump a flag of the city of Elmhurst and the emblems of the Police and Fire Department. You made a real statement for the city of Elmhurst by doing that, and we truly, truly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
This is from the American Legion, THB Post 187. We wanted to give this to the city. I talked to our commanding officers, and we'd like to do that whenever you're ready.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump up, but I'm going to, I want to get that flag. Get it. Thank you. Bill, can we unfold it, take a look at it?
Absolutely. It's a little wrinkled, because I had it stuffed in my shirt.
Were you sweating?
No. It was good cushioning for me, though.
Two copies of the budget thing. You got some more stuff?
Oh, because...
We need to...
Let's have one chief on this side.
Oh, they're updates. Thank you.
We good? Eric, what was it?
Looking good, gentlemen.
All right, Bill, what else you got there?
That's why I heard it's here.
Nothing at all. I want to give the ball one to the 101st Airborne.
Okay.
Two men that really supported 187, done a lot for us, and this will be for you guys along, seven wings. Remember 75th anniversary of D-Day, and remember us.
Thank you.
In your honor, thank you very much for your support, your veterans, and all that stuff.
All right.
12 members of council would like to shake their hand. Great job, Bill. Thank you for your service. To your service, Bill. Thank you very much. That's pretty cool, huh?
Hi, Bill. Good work.
Thanks, Young Bill.
Oh, no, never, never.
Were you his trainers? Oh, okay. But you haven't, you said you weren't a... It's just the first time I've ever... What is it? Is it down? Is it about this jump, though? Oh, okay, all right. Mr. Shanklin, thanks again, really appreciate it. Okay, great way to start a meeting. On to Agenda Item 4, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communications that they want to submit to our clerk? Please raise your hand. I see somebody raising their hand for somebody else. Please, whatever you have, please hand to the clerk. Okay, anyone else, any written communication? Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask when you recognize that you make way to the microphone, over to my right, the back microphone. When you get to the microphone, we ask that you state your name, as we are recording this, address is optional. Out of respect for the work that we need to get done here this evening, and respect for others who may want to talk, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. At this time, Clerk Zyprian, do we have anybody who's signed up for public forum?
Yes, we do, Mayor Marley. First would be Joe Martucci.
Great. Mr. Martucci, microphone kind of behind you there.
Right here?
Yep.
How many have we got? Okay. I made a few notes here, because I didn't want to miss anything. I'm a resident for 56 years on Jill Court in Elmhurst on the North End. This is in reference to the controversy of the traffic lights that were seeking to be installed at a crosswalk. I want to take a minute to thank Mr. Jim Kennedy, Chairman of the Public Works, and his committee, and also the residents of Crown Estates and the surrounding area. I want to thank you for your diligent effort to expedite the request of installing traffic lights in a proper crosswalk at this intersection. As you heard from prior testimonies of residents there, as you heard from a mother who lost her son there, and the school principal who is just about to retire there from either Churchville Junior High or Conrad Fisher, her concern of the 1,000 children ages five from 13, five to 13 years of age, who are transferred by bus twice a day on a daily basis. Safety of our children and our residents are our main concern there. I spearheaded this project last year and received 450 residents on a petition. In addition to that, 15 of the merchants on the west side of York Road, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, all of them, signed a letter that was put together by Mr. DiCiani, asking them what their pleasure was, and they were all in favor of this transition taking place. So, again, I'm just here to say thank you, and hopefully this can go further. Thank you.
Claude Pogash?
Claude Pogash, 566 West Gladys. Read the local paper. There's a development on Addison. Like a little money. Council members, one brought it up, they didn't like the material that was going to be used, and so, this developer's all keen on making a change, as long as somebody foots the bill for it. Having been in the business, I know a set of drawings and at least a sketch had to be given to the so-called Building Department. Let them look at it. Type of material used was already there. Two extra stories weren't, but that was taken care by the council, why not? What are the rules in this town? Every building that goes up seems to have a new set of rules. Zoning changes, building code changes. When? Why do you guys spend all this time setting up a set of rules and then taking them and saying, "Well, we'll just change it"? I understand you want development, but if you don't have any rules at all, then what do you have? Make excuses for them. Well, the poor guy's going to have to spend a lot of money for water retention. This council argued for months about water retention. You debated zoning. They changed the building code. So, this whole concept here of, "Well, as long as the city foots the bill, I'll do what they would like." And then I got the Assistant City Manager talking about spending a million dollars to dress up the area. Homeowners can't even get a sidewalk put in front of their house unless they pay for it. They can't get a street fixed and repaved unless they come down here and yell and scream until they're blue in the face and their alderman is told, "Take a hike, we'll do it at our wish."
Mr. Pogash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
So, when is this body going to at least pay part of the attention to the rules and stop just bending and twisting and giving away money like you got your own printing presses?
Michael Crumery?
They can't get a street fixed and repaved unless they come down here and yell and scream until they're blue in the face and their alderman is told, "Take a hike. We'll do it at our, at our wish."
Mr. Pogash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
So when is this body going to at least, at least pay part of the attention to the rules and stop just bending and twisting and giving away money like you got your own printing presses?
Michael Crumery?
My lovely wife there. Thank you for taking the time to listen to feedback and input from Elmhurst residents. I have two questions and a statement to make this evening. Uh, are the sidewalk cafes in Elmhurst providing the required five feet of pedestrian walkway space? Uh, why is it five feet of pedestrian walkway required? Uh, that is the distance that a wheelchair user requires to maneuver in a complete circle is five feet. And this was not by choice, I broke my foot on Father's Day. Uh, on a more serious issue, the state of Illinois will allow recreational use of marijuana starting in 2020. Has the state or local police departments determined, determined a measurement for when someone is too high? A blood alcohol content is zero point, point zero eight percent results in an immediate arrest for DUI. What will be the tools and measurement levels available to keep our roadways safe for marijuana users? Four years ago today, on July first, 2015, a precious life was lost. A tragedy that was one hundred percent preventable. A tragedy directly caused by the sanctuary city policy of San Francisco. In March of 2015, U.S. Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, ICE, issued a detainer for Juan Francisco Lopez Sanchez requesting that he be kept in custody until immigration authorities could pick him up. As a sanctuary city, San Francisco did not honor the detainer and released him back into the streets of San Francisco. Sanchez had been deported from the U.S. a total of five times, most recently in twenty, two thousand nine. Sanchez had seven felony convictions. Multiple convictions for felony heroin possession and manufacturing narcotics. He was a drug dealer. San Francisco did not honor the ICE detainer, released Sanchez from the San Francisco County Jail on April fifteenth. Less than three months later, on July first, 2015, San Francisco's sanctuary policy directly caused the murder of Kate Steinle by Juan Francisco Lopez Sanchez. Sanchez fired three shots from a forty caliber handgun at Pier fourteen, a tourist area in the waterfront district. One of the bullets struck Steinle in the back and pierced her aorta. She collapsed to the pavement while screaming for help from her father, Jim, who was with her at Pier fourteen. Jim Steinle performed CPR on his daughter before the paramedics arrived. Kate Steinle died two hours later at San Francisco General Hospital. Imagine the excruciating grief of a father performing CPR to save his daughter's life. My request to everyone here, before you and your family sit down to celebrate the Fourth of July, please, a moment of silence, prayer, and reflection for the Steinle family. Thank you.
Kim Knabel?
Good evening, my name is Kim Knabel. I am a resident of Elmhurst. My husband and I have lived here for over twenty-one years. Excuse me. We have two children in Elmhurst schools, one is in high school and one's in grade school. As everyone knows and as the last speaker just mentioned, the governor signed into law last week a law legalizing recreational marijuana in Illinois. This law gives cities the ability to opt out of having marijuana storefronts in their communities. I'm speaking tonight to urge the city council to ban these pot shops from Elmhurst. A recent study from Centennial Institute in Colorado indicates that for every one dollar in tax revenue generated by the sales of legalized recreational marijuana, there are four hundred, four dollars and fifty cents in mitigating expenses to the taxpayers of Colorado in the form of increased mental and physical health care expenses, auto accidents, including fatalities, law enforcement, increased need for insurance, increases in insurance premiums, need for training and education, increased homelessness, increased school dropout rates, and many other problems. Studies also show that as the drug is legalized for those over twenty-one, that usage rates go up for all age groups. Especially noteworthy is the age group from twelve to twenty. Excuse me. Marijuana can adversely affect brain development of children and adolescents. It can be addictive and is leaked to, linked to, um, depression, psychosis, and suicide. Today's, today's marijuana is much more potent than it used to be. Levels of THC in the nineties were in the five to twenty percent range. Levels in today's marijuana products can range between twenty and seventy-five percent. Elmhurst has a lot of families with young children. I would encourage the city council to read the research on this issue and look at data from communities that have legalized marijuana and act in the best interests of its citizens, especially the youth, by banning these marijuana storefronts. Thank you.
Kathleen Sullivan?
Kathleen Sullivan, first, I guess I'd like to thank you for inviting Mr. Shanklin today. It was really nice to hear that Elmhurst had a connection to the commemorations of D-Day. I came tonight, though, to talk about, um, an organization called Higher Ground. They're the nation's leading gathering of flooding survivors. Uh, they have tapped into stop Elmhurst flooding, the advocacy group, um, for a number of reasons. One is because of our success, which is your success and the, in working with the other governmental bodies as well to address some of the issues here in Elmhurst. Uh, today, they are having, starting their, uh, first national, uh, campaign, the United Flooded States of America, and it, they would encourage people to participate and you should be encouraged to participate too as well as elected officials because your success is something that they're very interested in. Thank you.
That's the last person who signed in, Mayor.
Okay, uh, that's it for those who signed up for public forum. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up on our signing sheet before the meeting but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes public forum for this evening. Onto Agenda Item Six, announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that the Public Works and Buildings Committee will not be meeting next Monday eighth and will have its next meeting on twenty-second of July. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? Alderman York?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So in a little, a little over three weeks, the, uh, Elmer Cycling Classic is going to take place on Friday, July twenty-sixth. Um, we're getting ready for the event and, uh, please visit our website, elmbike.com. Um, we still, we always need volunteers. Takes about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty people to, um, help us, uh, put on the race and so some, if you could volunteer for a shift, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda? Any aldermen wishes to have removed, to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman York?
Seven point two one.
Seven point two one. Alderman Deuter?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight. Alderman Bram?
Seven point six.
Six. Point six, seven point eight, seven point two one. Anyone else? At this time, along with the motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item seven point six, seven point eight, and seven point two one. Most by Alderman Bram, second by Alderman New York. Ciprian?
Park, absent, Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Blumsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries Agenda Item, I'm sorry, Consent Agenda is approved, minus items seven point six, seven point eight, and seven point two one. On to seven point six. This is a referral, um... To put this before council, ask for motion to, um... Approve the, uh, request from City Manager Grousky. Motion to approve the request from City Manager Grousky. Most by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Bram, you pulled this. I'll remind you that you're limited to whether or not the referral is appropriate, not the contents of the referral.
Thank you. Um, and that is what I will speak to. Excuse me. So this referral, um, is something that has been already acted upon and not only acted upon, actually was on the agenda, the city council agenda, uh, months ago. So even though I applaud the, the referral and its contents because I think it should still continue to be discussed, um, the intent of Chapter two point zero four DD, Referrals of Matters to Committee, it states that it is only referrals that have not been acted upon the committee to which it was assigned shall expire by April thirtieth of each odd-numbered year. This has been acted upon, it's been in discussion, it's been here on the dais, it was pulled back by the same committee for, I don't know the reason, that wasn't stated that evening. Um, so I feel this is, even though the end is the same either way, if there's a referral or not, this is setting a precedent. This is not the intent of that ordinance, that part of the ordinance, and therefore I can't support the referral because this is not needed. It's not justified. Our code says that it's not justified. It's been acted upon. The intent was for something that's been lingered on the pending items list that hasn't been touched. Those are the items that should be removed off the pending items and then re-referred, uh, back to committee if so chosen. So only of those reasons I cannot support this referral because this is going to set a precedent on what and, and what should and should not be re-referred after that April thirtieth date of an odd-numbered year.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Ciprian?
Park, absent, Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Blumsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, motion carries. I apologize. Um, undo Agenda Item seven point two one, this is an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Ciprian to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by any, by and between DuPage Cycling Foundation and the city of Elmhurst, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois.
Uh, to put this before council, ask for motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman Deuter, you pulled this, shall I just jump to you? Alderman Kennedy?
First thing, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Deuter?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So this issue has been highly visible for a short period of time and I would like to thank the members of the who've taken the time to provide input. Neighborhood traffic issues are one of just a few areas where we see incredibly passionate pub, public engagement and that's with good reason. Throughout the city, if we were to ask residents if they would like to see more traffic control in their immediate area, which typically comes in the form of a stop sign, most folks would pretty quickly say yes. So neighborhood interest in a stop sign is pretty common. Those requests are always reviewed by P A and S. Interest in a traffic light is much less common. I, this is the first request in my six years on the council that I can recall. So it's the first time that it's come to P A and S. I think the, these types of reviews are kind of the bread and butter for, sorry, for P A and S. It's not the bread and butter for Public Works. Um, so it, as I was thinking, the approach that we should take, it seems to me we could take an approach similar to that that Public Affairs takes. And as I understand, their approach is, you know, the process for their review starts with the neighborhood interest and that leads to a referral. The referral prompts staff to conduct a review and make a recommendation and then there's further study as appropriate. So in this case, we had a referral. It was requested that, um, there be a review and evaluation of the intersection to determine the need to either alter or increase traffic control. Staff took that referral and prepared a memo that was attached to our committee agenda last week. And in that memo, staff stated that they were looking for direction on how to proceed for this evaluation and suggested potential improvements could include lighting, signs, turn restrictions, or traffic signal installation. The staff also indicated that they could study this intersection as a standalone or what they recommended is that we look at this intersection as part of the phase one engineering of the North York Corridor Project. And staff indicated that they were, um, intended to put funding for that project or for the phase one study in next year's budget. So staff's recommendation to look at this intersection as part of the entire corridor and do that as part of the phase one engineering made sense to me. Um, I am, typical approach is to accept, accept the staff recommendation unless I can point to a reason that I think another approach makes more sense. And, you know, for me personally, I didn't hear justification, um, that, you know, takes me to an approach different than the one staff recommended. So for that reason, I didn't sign the report and I'm not going to vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Dun?
From what I understand, this, uh, the study that's being recommended by this report is, uh, is about a twelve thousand dollar, uh, is the estimate for it, uh, while, while within the city manager's authority to approve. I, um, Alderman Deuter talked about staff's recommendation, um, where there is a corridor study contemplated. I think that, I think that's a good idea, uh, to see how this intersection nests with, within the, the whole area. But I do believe that the results of this study, um, would be in alignment and support that study. The, the results of it, of this study would support the corridor, the, the larger scale corridor study. So at this time, uh, and I was one of the, uh, ref- 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 refers with Alderman Blumsky, uh, at this time, I would support the, the report, uh, to go forward because I think it's, um, uh, there will be, there will be beneficial information gleaned from it that will, uh, be, um, supportive of the corridor study as well. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's Clerk Ciprian call the vote.
Park, absent, Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
No.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Blumsky?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Uh, twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. I apologize. Undo Agenda Item seven point two one, this is an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Ciprian to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by any, by and between DuPage Cycling Foundation and the city of Elmhurst, Cook and DuPage Counties, Illinois.
Uh, to put this before council, ask for motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Blumsky. Discussion? Uh, Alderman York, you pulled this.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I, I pulled it to abstain from voting.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Clerk Ciprian?
Park, absent, Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Blumsky?
Aye.
York?
Abstain.
Toledo?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one abstain and one absent.
Twelve ayes, one abstain. Motion carries, Agenda Item seven point two one is approved. Um, on to, uh, Agenda Item eight. On to agenda item 8, that's reports and recommendations of appointed officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Two quick reports. One is, North Avenue, if you haven't noticed, our North Avenue reconstruction is clogging up the entire town, north to south, east to west. But it's a necessary evil. We have to refinish that, and we depend on that road quite a bit. Best estimate at this point is we're looking at mid to late July for that to wrap up. We appreciate your patience as we continue to resurface that area. The only other report I have is that our summer trolley is up and running and doing quite well. I used it this weekend, happen to have family in town, and if you haven't had an opportunity, please take it. Showcases Elmhurst very well. City Manager, Assistant City Manager Kopno report. Any other reports from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item 9.1. This is an ordinance. Clerk Ciprian, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance vacating the Walter Street right-of-way from Prospect Avenue to Myrtle Avenue in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Any discussion? Alderman Bram?
I don't remember when this was on the consent agenda, the report, that is. I didn't support it then. I won't be supporting the ordinance now. I think 25 percent of the EAV of such a property is just too low. I agree with vacating this property to Elmhurst College, but the price point, to me, is just too low.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Ciprian?
Park, absent. Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Abstain.
Toledo?
Aye.
11 ayes, 1 nay, 1 present, 1 absent.
Okay. 11 ayes, 1 abstention, 1 objection, or 1 no. This is a purchase of property. This requires supermajority of the corporate authority of, which I'm a member of, which means that it needs 12 votes. Isn't that correct, Mr. City, Mr. Attorney? And in this instance, that means that I vote. And I will vote with the ayes as a 12 vote. Well, is that a 12 vote? I'll vote to bring the ayes to 12, is a better way to state that. Good?
Aye.
Okay. Got that, Clerk Ciprian?
Got it.
So that would be 12 ayes, 1 abstention, 1 nay. Motion carries. 1 absent. On to agenda 9.2. This is an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Ciprian to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a preliminary estimate with Kamala Edison for overhead to underground utility relocation in the alley bounded by North York Street, Second Street, North Addison Avenue, and Third Street in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay. To put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, any setup on this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is tied to an item that is on the consent agenda for work that ComEd will be doing in the alley right-of-way, Second and Third, essentially behind the Lennar Development, and to be able to determine what would be required to bury the utilities. That's work that we want to get done quickly, and thus the reason we've asked to suspend the rules in the same evening. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments? Please call the vote.
Park, absent. Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dun?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
13 ayes, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 1 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. Other business? Agenda item 10. Any other business? Alderman Conquest?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, there was a referral. I got, received a couple of phone calls, so I just want to state, regarding cannabis, the DPZ Committee will pick this up in August. As I've learned from experience, this is an item I think people are going to come out for, and the summer months is not the time to hold it, so it'll probably be late August when school's back in session. I just want to make an announcement on that business. Thank you.
All right. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion adjourned. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Toledo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.